Away from.
Yeah.
There.
It's a little loud.
Maybe.
Could that be it?
Sort of heard that.
Yeah.
Do it again.
Do what again?
Right there.
Do what?
Keep talking. First time you've ever heard somebody say that to you.
That's true.
It's recording.
I think it's pretty good.
Are we being recorded?
Yeah.
Twice.
And so, alright.
Right?
Meeting minutes from the eighth. So a lot of motions happening in there.
She turns.
Very interested.
He's gonna turn on the trans.
We're gonna turn on the transition. The AI thing, so. I don't know that.
I guess so, they're dirty too.
If I just hold them over here, it should be.
Just hold it for one.
I'll ask them.
You're you're allowing people from outside to.
Yes, yes.
Maybe just minutes for it.
Any discussion? On favor? Alright, um. So we are going to table both the action items for the warrants motion to table. More than number six until next meeting. Is there a second?
Backroom.
Any discussion?
No.
On favor?
Alright.
Alright, so we've got and chips for table in too, right?
Is he not? And he asked to be on the agenda.
Did you say to table chips?
Yeah. Chip is.
Alright, motion to table historical society update until next meeting.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
On favor?
Alright.
Alright, we got the. Um, twenty twenty six liquor license fee structure. So we currently have been charging what, like three hundred dollars?
Hundred.
Hundred. I need to speak. Okay, last year it was a hundred fifty and I had a brain cramp and I charged him a hundred. I don't know why. Um, so. What do you want me to charge this year?
Sorry. That's okay, um, we want just wanna go back to the one fifty.
Okay.
Is that?
That's what I put in the letter, assuming I'm I'm ready to send the letter out to them in the. Application, so.
Okay.
One fifty?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, um. Personnel policies.
We're going to discuss those as a department. Oh, that's more. Right.
Which is on the twenty ninth, just in case anybody's wondering.
Twenty nine. Thank you. Alright, so table the review personnel policies till the twenty nine?
Yep.
Um, any expression, all favor?
Alright.
Alright.
Alright. Uh, firehouse. Welcome.
Bye.
Alright, so we were, um, we wanted to just kind of bring this back on the agenda to start talking about it again. So that when. Start working on it. Board. Um. Christina. Christina put together some packets for us just to kind of update us on where we were financially with everything. And it looked like kind of where we left off. The Weston and Sampson were recommending, um. The salt shed. And they were looking for a special town meeting vote in twenty twenty four, which was that was the one voted down, correct?
No, we didn't.
It didn't happen, okay, so they were looking at voting for projects, vote location and budget. Completion of design and putting the project out to bid, design and OPM services through construction, so that. Was ready to be voted, didn't happen, and then I think the next phase. That I had read for. What was that on? For them was they were looking for. Four hundred ninety-six thousand. Well, if we went through. A and E or four seventy-one if we did the delegated design services. For. Everything, but that was in twenty twenty-four. Um, and that's including the. Um, design fee, special services. Um, schematic design through bidding. Um. The remaining schematic design, design development, and then the final design and the bidding cost. Um.
And that's just for Weston and Sampson, there's also the.
There would also be the OPM fee. Yeah. So that's kind of where we left off, so.
Chief enough.
So que- question. Did we spend all the money? Have they completed what they agreed to to Weston Sampson?
Up until this point, yes.
Okay, so they're. Clear.
Go, there's still funding remaining. It was not, it was never funded to 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 the to the dollar, right, so there's extra. Money that's still sitting in that.
That's what I meant.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. We know how much that is.
No, if you recall, uh, last week when I had reached out to, um, Kelly and Sarah, they were still working on like the end of year stuff to get everything.
So we have funds of remaining that were already moved. From building stabilization into an account where we actually spent it.
Yes.
Okay.
So this would get us through what, design?
The number she just quoted before ninety-six, unless we go with, I'm not sure why we wouldn't go with it designated. Delegation or whatever that was. So the delegated design takes. Um, some.
Some control out of our.
Control out of our hands, yeah.
Well, that's why you have an OPM.
Well, so the engineer is offering delegated design or eh the A and E design, right, which is where you get to make. Your own decisions about. What specific products you want use, things like that, right? Delegated design means they're just going to, this is the design, this is what we're using, this is what we're going with, like there's no. Kind of more basic, that's why it's costs less money. So, but again, as Kara said, those numbers are from the end of twenty twenty-four, I don't know.
Sure, they're not funded.
Are you getting pretty real? You have a lot of luck and guts.
So I don't know if the next step for us is to, um. Think about when we have our, not this special time meeting, we have the twenty-second, but when we want to do another one and. Revisit this. Um. To move money from, some would be from stabilization, I'm not sure how much is in stabilization. I don't know if there's enough to cover that. No. Well, so some would be from stabilization, some might be from. Through cash. Um, to fund the next phase.
Uh, I think first, most important, you have to see if the community is going to vote on the only viable site that they have put together there.
Well, we do have an option.
I'm not saying that you don't, TJ, I'm just saying.
But I mean. As it stands right now. You know, looking at at the salt shed area. No one's gonna vote for it. Alright, so. Why are you gonna carry that through when you know it's not gonna pass? We have a site right here in town. Where you can get it for reasonable money. And it it will be more than adequate. In fact, it's expandable if we have to. I mean, we're not gonna be.
I think the same, no one's gonna vote for it as a bit of a.
Huh?
I think there are people that would vote for salt shed, but. Um.
I wouldn't shoot far out of town.
I think that we've been talking. About the fact that. It doesn't really matter at center of town because. With where our volunteers are coming from, and our volunteers come from all over town, and we're an emergency.
And they come to the center of town to go in different areas once they get the fire.
Or they come to the fight where the fire.
So they they come to the center of town, they go out onto Chester Road. They get the fire equipment, come back to the center of town.
Why would they come to the center more? They would go to the fire department, they wouldn't come to the center first.
Well. They have, most of them have to come through the summer of town to get to the bit.
Not necessarily, we don't know where they all go.
Else they got a helicopter.
Some of them might live out that way.
Not too many.
So my point is, I think we've we've gone this far with. They've narrowed down six sites and they narrowed it down to this one area. If we decide that we want to include another site, is how much is this gonna cost us to go and?
How much did we know how much it cost us when they looked at this location?
They didn't really look at this location, they did like a very brief. To have a full.
Pretty quick.
Plus, we're talking about a location that we already own. The salt shed versus property that we would have to purchase.
Understood.
So I mean, you have to add that into the. Or.
But you, but. The the amount of money that you're going to be invested into the property. Is not. You're not talking hundreds of thousands of dollars, talking less than a hundred thousand dollars. For ten plus acres, and it's our.
So you think people.
Well, you went to see it, Adam, what did you think?
It's not the worst idea. Uh. I like the fact that it's in town. Um.
It has accessibility from twenty-three on both sides.
Yeah, I mean, it's not a terrible, it's not a terrible spot. The. Drawback. So from a fire department perspective, I don't have it, I don't think I have any issue with it. Uh. I think from town perspective. It means your two facilities are gonna, you're gonna have to build, double build everything, so there is no shared.
There's no possibility to share there.
Yeah, so.
Didn't you just say it was ten acres?
Ten acres, yeah.
Wouldn't you be able, why can't you build a facility, a joint facility on ten acres?
Oh, eh, sure, I thought the intent was always to move highway to the salt shed, sorry.
Oh, I don't know, I don't know what the intent, nobody's voted, so I don't know.
Uh, I was, I think actually maybe that's unfair. Comment, like maybe that's. Maybe then. The salt shed isn't a salt shed. Maybe it's just a salt shed at that point, I guess.
So I just, my my concern with. Looking into another piece of land at this point is just the amount of money that we're gonna spend with engineers to keep this field like. Going backwards.
Probably does, the primary complaint from everyone though has been. Uh, they they prefer the fire department in time, I can't say so I disagree. Uh. All things being equal, but obviously all things aren't, so.
Where is the other piece of property?
Roughly across from. The, do you know where the cemetery entrance is on the North Lanford Road?
Yeah.
Very, right there.
Right in there ish, yeah, it's right about there. Just a little up, the, just a little up from where the cemetery building is, yeah, so maybe another. Hundred fifty feet up. And then.
It wraps all the way around behind the other houses.
Yeah. There's one house there now.
I would. If I were just to lay it out there, I would say my two cents would be. If. If it's a, if you guys think it's a viable solution. Um, first of all, we gotta give it the town's people first and just just. Lay out what this project team already did, which we never did, we never closed that out, right, and say. They landed on all the places kind of did not work. They landed on the salt shed as being the only thing that was left, the only option on the table was the salt shed. And if we were to take it to the next level, to the next stage, just by making that decision, wait a second, I'll get to the other part. Is. Anywhere from four hundred and seventy-one to four ninety-six or more because we haven't gotten a new vote.
Mm-hmm.
Right? At that point, we could always ask Weston and Sampson, what would it cost to go out and assess that area for us and come back with the number? Is it twenty thousand, is it fifty thousand, is it ten thousand, what is it? If it's ten thousand dollars. And you're told already in the four seventy-one area.
Ten thousand.
Is it a, is it something that the town's gonna work, because the town's gonna find out about it and they're gonna say, well, why do you have to bring it up as an offer?
Taking away at it.
So what we really need to do is assess and find out, I think, what Weston has to say, how much is it?
Yeah.
And go from there and then present that at the same time to the town and say. You know, you have option A or option B, all we're really looking for is for. Weston to say, is it even an option? Because remember in that area too, isn't it fully vivid?
Yeah, yeah.
So we're gonna have, that's another cost that wasn't in the original prices, salt sheds already.
Leave it as wet ones.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, don't, yeah, so my. Suggestion would be. Let's present it. Right, let's ask Weston, what would it cost to do an assessment, if it comes back outrageous? We'll present that number and say, do you want to pay that to have this other? Option.
Difference for the to have that close to time, yeah.
Right, is it really, are you willing to spend your tax money? On. Looking at another site.
And then clearing the land and purchasing it.
Right.
Well, no matter what the design structure is. You know, that that's one cost there. So no matter where you go, you still have the design.
Right.
We approached the project from that perspective to say, come up with a design, not. One for the site, one for that.
Right, right, yeah, correctly.
I think it's, I think it's the same building either way.
But we have to agree, we're done with looking at.
Yes, this needs to be.
Gotta be it.
It's just, it's embarrassing how many years and how many sites we hurt at, like it's gotta stop at some point, we have to build a fire department, they need a fire department. Um. Maybe that's money left, you said there's money left, and so. We may be able to afford if the town wants us to move forward with that.
Take it from the money.
Taking that without having to go to special town meeting, and then I guess the next step would be. Asking Weston and Sampson to do a presentation for residents.
Yeah, that was always the plan, once you guys were ready to move forward, is that both the OPM and Weston and Sampson would come in. And give a full presentation on everything that was looked at, all the studies.
Yeah.
Um, and you know, why the costs are what they are and timelines and things like that.
It's talking about timing. So are we saying that we go to the table meeting? Have them come in and present? And say there's another site we can look at? And this is how we can do that?
No, I didn't have them present, if you're gonna have them look at another location, don't have them present before they have.
Alright, I'm just wanna make sure we're clear on that.
I think we should rule it in or out.
Okay. So we gotta see if there's enough money, crack you said, okay.
Yeah, so if there's enough money, then we can do, we'll report with that, and if not, we have to go to, go to a special town.
So when can we find out that, do you think? From Weston and Sampson?
Uh, uh, like a preliminary cost for another feasibility study?
Yeah.
Um, I will reach out to them and, uh. Ask for some sort of quote for that work to be done.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, and then I will get an exact number. From Kelly and Sarah on what's remaining.
Okay. Any thoughts on a date that we would get in front of the town?
Like.
I guess.
Back first.
Yeah, would depend on that, I think.
It would be pretty arbitrary.
Well, no, do you want it in the fall, do you want it next spring, when you want it, like, we wanna do it before the holidays?
Right.
I think the sooner the better, it's because I.
Yeah.
You know, that we keep dangling and, uh. Dilly-dallying.
So let's shoot for at least before the holidays.
Yeah.
What's happening, I'm sorry, before the holidays?
The town meeting. If Weston and Sampson can come in and do, yes, can come in and do their assessment of.
Not the town meeting, presentation.
The presentation, I'm sorry. Isn't it a town?
That's a tight, that's a tight window, it's almost October.
Understood, I just, you know, they they've been paid hundreds of thousands of dollars.
You're not gonna get argued for.
Waiting, you know, in my opinion, look, these guys. There's no reason why they can't get this done, they haven't been doing anything for us for months, yeah. If they can't, they can't, but I would push them.
Yeah, that's Christina pushing, right, I have not interacted with them.
Yeah.
Somewhat intentionally.
Yeah, so we'll reach out and get us.
Okay.
Uh. Idea of money and time.
Mm-hmm, so do we take the OPM discussion to executive session or can we talk about it?
I don't think we can talk much about OPM.
Unless you're considering.
Under litigation.
Yeah. Unless you're considering litigation with OPM, you can't go into executive session for them. If you are considering it, you can.
I think we are already in litigation with OPM, is that correct? That just froze, everything stopped.
Yep. Let me ask you a question, maybe you would know, Adam, did the OPM ever show you a project plan?
A proper project plan? Not that I'm aware of. It's been a while since I looked at it, but I don't recall ever getting that.
I never saw one.
Very much generalities.
Okay, on a scale from one to ten, what would you write them?
One being the worst and ten being the best.
Everything you did.
Uh. I haven't been involved in a ton of municipal building projects, I think they were. My. Uh, my assumption going into the project was that they were gonna help take ownership and lead the projects, and I felt like we had to direct. Everything. That happened, and it became pretty obvious we could. Live in purgatory. Forever, uh.
Okay.
Based on. How they. Responded, I never had a qualm with the output. Of the work, but I felt it had to be very specifically directed. To receive what we were looking for. How's that, so. One of ten, I'd probably say. Three-ish, uh. Nice enough people, I just, I don't think they were. Moving to. Advance the product in any meaningful way.
Yeah.
Yeah. Wasn't that kind of their job?
I interpreted it that kind of their job, that's why I come in, five, three might be a little gentle.
Be nice.
Of course. Alright, so they, oh, sorry.
One of the, uh, things that you have to consider when you have an OPM, they're they're on the job. They're the ones that make sure that the project is on schedule, they're the ones that. Pay out if nothing's right, the contractor don't get paid and that, and it's a lot easier. To apply for grants when you have an OPM.
We have to have.
Yeah, basically, yes.
Yes, but we don't have that.
You know, and, uh, when I was on the group that interviewed the project managers and, uh. We decided on City Point because they seemed to have the most experience in what we were trying to accomplish.
So they completed, did they complete the first bit phase? Bid, no, we haven't bid anything, no, did, did, I'm sorry, did they complete the first phase in our contract with them, wasn't it? Broken down into phases, our contract with City Point.
For the four phases.
Yes, so the first part was why I think what Adam was just talking about, was their job was to sort of lead.
Yeah.
To get us to bit phase.
So we haven't, so we haven't gotten to the end, we paid them for.
For what they have done.
For what they've done, but we aren't there.
We're not there, and that's the, in the packet that I had given you, they are looking for additional funding.
Yeah, right. Um.
I do think some of our wounds were self-inflicted, right, where we jumped around at multiple sites and things like that, like, totally get it, but I don't think all of it.
Yeah.
Um, and self-inflicted or not, the project manager's job is to keep us on track.
Yeah.
Right?
Yes.
Yeah, when when you're in the negotiation stage.
We're not even close to there, right, like, my issue is like, I don't feel like we're still square. Zero.
Mm-hmm.
One, like, it's been.
I don't think it's zero.
Fifteen years? Twenty years?
Yeah.
Well, first. Project that I worked on for a new fire department. Was forty years ago.
Yeah, so there you have it. We're almost done.
So.
Might not be able to build it back then.
When we want to look at. Hiring. We, so at this point, we can look at going with a different OPM.
Right.
If we decide to do that.
So.
We have to put it out to bid again, correct?
And does that restart the.
And then. What happens is, at that, they have to sort of learn the whole project, right?
I don't know that at this stage, there's gonna be an OPM that's gonna wanna pick up. Yeah.
Yeah.
So this is where we kind of left off to. Kind of work out the situation with City Point to get us to.
I think if we, sorry.
Bit phase, no.
I think if we approach it from the standpoint of. Well, there was a lot of. Stuff in the middle there, right, like we changed TAs eight times.
Right.
Um. The the project had a committee, didn't have a committee, had a committee, didn't have a committee, like. I think if we go into it from. The. Understanding that we're only gonna get out of it what we drive towards, and if there is. My impression when we had kind of the group. Before them was working on it was, it was almost still up in the air if we're gonna do anything or not. So if we're sort of fully committed to, yeah, we've gotta figure out what we're gonna do. It's not a question of whether or not we do something, it's a question of how we afford what we need to do.
Correct.
I think that's a different. Perspective. And we can drive towards that kind of, this chairs weird, um, drive towards that.
Um.
And. We have. At least accumulated a little bit of scar tissue over it, that it's only gonna happen the way we directed. I think they can be managed. That way. Towards that specific outcome.
The city point.
But if we think we're going to be able to contract with them. And the result is gonna somehow magically be different because. We've picked a location, I would. Find that hard to believe, like, we have to continue to say, like, put a line in the sand. This is delivered by the state, this is delivered by the state, need to go out to bid.
Well, and I.
And we want it stationed actually built by the time some of us are still here.
My two cents on all the projects, I mean, we got big projects going in library or whatever, any, if it ever goes off plan. It needs to come to the board. We're going on plan, I'm gonna go off this much, because. Any off plan changes the financials, uh, story, right? So. That will be the, and I would like to get your opinions on it, but I would like to see if these projects. Are are, um, projecting. That they're not gonna be on plan for whatever reason, and I'm talking two weeks. Right, they're off two weeks. That the leader of that project has to come and explain what's going on.
Mm-hmm.
Same thing with change control, I already told Nicole, with change control, it's gotta come past us because. We're the ones that are going to the town for the money.
Mm-hmm.
And we don't wanna go back to the town for more money. Right? So in this case, had we had some kind of a. System that said, hey, we're going a yearly or whatever, it should have been after two weeks off project plan. You come before the board and say, this is what's going on, that's, that would be a way to at least. Manage the project manager more effectively.
Yeah.
Um, and if it's not the project manager's fault, fine, it doesn't matter if it's at fault, just what is.
Just the bearings, yeah.
Right.
Cause they'll drag it out forever, like you said.
Yeah.
I don't think they.
So regardless of whether or not we're going to stick with City Point, they would still be part of the presentation.
Yes.
To the town. Okay, and then.
Might have to write a check though.
At some point, yeah, some point. Then after the presentation, we will have to decide. Are we gonna move forward to City Point, and if so, that becomes the whole other situation we should go into again. Until what phase? I think we talked about until the the build phase and then we could. The bidding phase, oh, and then we could.
Right, because, uh, you know, when you think about City Point and the project manager that was on there. She may have been the project manager for the, what we call the soft skill set, which is getting them through, getting of us through this phase. And then they may bring in someone completely different. What's that?
We've already been assigned somebody new.
For the build phase?
No, just in general, I think that she must have advanced. Or she retired, I don't really know.
Right. So in effect, what I'm saying though is in fact, you're starting over with the project. Especially she never demonstrated to her product plan. No project plan, all you get is notes.
Yeah, well, it's all I think I've seen from them, that they were note takers.
So I'm just saying the door, I think is still open for if they're the right people or not.
Well, I think, I think a lot of that lies, a lot of our responsibility relies on us.
Okay.
Because there, there's been a lot of. Discussion and you think the things were set at the, at the meeting, so you go to the next meeting and all of a sudden. Don't want on our side, well, I don't think we discussed this enough. And I mean, at, at some point, we catch repetitive. You're not getting anywhere. And I think a lot of that responsibility resides, resides on us.
Okay.
So what's?
So next.
Feel like I don't know where the next.
Reach out to Weston and Sampson. I'm going to see if they can provide me with some sort of quote for feasibility study for this.
That location.
For that location. I will need information on the location. I don't. Know. Um. I will check with Kelly to see what's left in that account. And we will see what they come back with us and say it's X amount of dollars for a full, so this wouldn't be like what we did here. This was like a back of the napkin. They just, this would be a full feasibility study where they're, I'm sure we're gonna do test piss and all that other stuff. Uh, so we will find out what the price is on that and we will presumably move forward with the feasibility study. We will get the results of that feasibility. Study, then the town, they would have to come and give a presentation. With the results of the most recent feasibility study and all of the other studies that they've done up to date, they would go over what the plan is. The costs, what the next steps are presented all to the town, then we would have to have a special town meeting. Ask the town, listen, do you want this look? I don't know that this new location is necessary. They could come back and say it's not feasible. They could come back and say it's more feasible than the salt shed. I have no idea.
Yeah.
If we are to end up in a position where this new location is not feasible, then we have to be prepared to say, okay, we've. Exhausted all, you know, and unfortunately it is only this, but they could come back and say, hey, this one's even better than the salt shed and now the town has a choice, right? Is it salt shed? Is it this new location? They vote. And we would then proceed with whatever location they voted on, but we also have to have a vote on how we're gonna fund the next step. So great, we have a location, but. How are we funding the design phase and the, the bid and build phase? So those are the two questions we will have to ask. The community.
Now. Good, we uh. Notify City Point that we are doing.
They will, yeah, so it's gonna, I'm gonna see every time I talk to one of them that they're.
Yeah, okay, yeah, cause I just wanna be fair.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
Moving right along.
Did you have something else? Now it's gone, alright, it's gonna make it comes back up. Alright, certification reimbursement.
Am I?
You're good.
Dismissed.
You're.
You are dismissed.
Freedom play.
You're gonna be here Thursday or no? Great. Sorry, I didn't say that.
I can join.
Oh, is that the?
I can join your.
Hazard mitigation?
Yeah. Jackie took yours away, so don't worry, yeah.
You can have that one. Futures call.
Um, uh, yeah, what's going on with? Certification, Brian Keach. Um, Ryan was certified with a wasting license maybe or no, A, I can't remember. Um, and under the old contract, the union contract, which we told these guys, until we come out with a new policy, that's what you're to go by.
Yeah.
Right? He was reimbursed one third of that. Under the old contract, he would be reimbursed a hundred percent. Which is. More or altogether? Hundred and eighty more.
Okay.
He got reimbursed ninety.
Okay.
So I'm just. So if it's currently under a union because we haven't. Come out. Come out with this, then I think he needs to be reimbursed the full. What is it altogether? Would be one twenty, he plus ninety, whatever that is. Thank you. Are you good with that?
I am.
Do we need a motion on it? I just don't know.
Well, maybe, yeah, then, then I can tell payroll.
So motion to reimburse Ryan Keach, each for the certification uh, wasting license. Um, in the amount of two hundred and seventy dollars. There's a guy.
Second.
Any session?
Nope.
On favor?
Alright.
Go ahead. Alright, we've got an appointment for the assessors. This is Michaela Smith.
Yeah, do you have her? Uh.
Yes.
Yep, what's the word I'm looking for? Yes, thank you.
You do. Currently it's been passed to accounting. Has um. Mister Hobson, uh, Shasha Hobson met with her and interviewed.
Yeah, he's interviewed her twice now.
Okay, so he's recommending?
Yes.
Um, I would make a motion. To appoint, is it an appointment or a hire?
Uh, we talked about this, it's just a straight hire.
Okay.
Um, same thing with follow-up, doesn't really need to have a motion or. It's just, he's just bringing it to you for you to approve.
So he will, so motion to approve. The hire.
I ask a question.
Can we do for discussion? Still hiring Michaela Smith, oh, for.
I was just gonna write the board approves.
Yeah. My question is, sometimes we interview people, sometimes we don't interview people. In this case, we're saying we're not interviewing, but we interviewed Ray's guy. So I think, that's a good point. Is this. Different because are those are hires, right? Those are not appointments. But I know we always ask for recommendation from the. People in charge of that department, um. I mean, I'm okay with not interviewing, don't get me wrong, but we need to be consistent in our approach. What are your thoughts, TJ?
My thoughts are is that. Hey, hire or if it doesn't work out with buyers.
So you're saying, in other words, in other words, I'm just asking for, if we're gonna have a department head. Uh, hire, right? Let's say water wants to hire somebody, just take that one as an example, right? Would we need to interview that person? Yes.
We did, we did for their hire when they hired, uh, what's her name?
Yeah, and we would if they were to hire a new superintendent.
Yeah, so I think we should interview.
Well, no, no, that's different. The department head is really the superintendent in that case, right? So whoever is the department head in the water, if they hire somebody, would we interview them? Well, we did hire Jasmine, or we did interview Jasmine. Okay, well, then we should interview this person.
Yeah, that would be correct.
Alright, do you wanna put her on the next agenda?
She's supposed to start to Wednesday, so.
Oh, okay.
Now, we're pretty desperate in that department.
I think. I understand, but we have to stay with, you know, we can't go for one and not do. Well, I think the problem too was that we, we had someone in the position and then they quit.
Yeah, I think. We can interview her on Monday anyways.
I'm so sorry, I meant this Wednesday.
So she was already hired.
So she was basically hired, but we can still interview her, so. You know, meet and brief, whatever.
Yeah.
You know. Apologize for what we're getting her into.
I didn't get that. Neither, she's technically already.
Yeah.
Right?
I believe she was offered the position. I don't.
Did she accept it?
Uh.
She, uh, I'm just trying to make a point of existence. Christina, you're up.
Okay. Um, so obviously, everybody knows September twenty ninth is our next departmental roundtable meeting.
Yeah.
I did send out um. An email to all department heads, letting them know that Kelly will be in attendance at that meeting. And asked them to come prepared with any questions or concerns that they have specifically for accounting. And their expenditures and their reports and all of that. Uh, so that will be the focus of the departmental meeting on the twenty ninth. With that in mind, I had also contacted Vadar to get a quote for training of. The different departments so that they could retrieve their own information. Uh, the reply I got was that they can offer. A session to do training on departmental reporting for Vadar accounting that doesn't require a quote, meaning they'll just do a training. I think, I believe it'll be about an hour long.
Oh, wow.
Uh, yeah, the session would be about an hour and can be split between offices or as a group. We can start this. And if needed, can then decide if additional training is needed, then they would provide a quote. So anything above and beyond what they're gonna basic. Show them.
Okay.
They would give us a quote for.
Basic part is free?
Yeah. Supposedly. Uh. So.
We're just sitting here untrained or mid degree?
I guess so.
Okay.
So. I had spoken with Jackie earlier, um. The people that I have here on the list, I just wanna run it by you guys to make sure I'm not missing anybody that you would want trained. So Joanne. Jackie. Nicole from the library. Um, Jennifer from Board of Health.
You're guilty.
No, it's okay, training for Vadar, you're on the list. Um, Ray from Highway. And Janet, um, Deb, would you also like training for Vadar? Just, I'm, I don't need to. But you're on.
How about Jasmine?
They had their own training.
Oh, they did their training, that's right. And no one else on water. We don't wanna. You could, we could invite Jasmine and if she wants to join. They have it down to how many?
No, so they didn't, because this is, this is just the basics. There's not like a real head count that they're saying, we'll, we'll do X amount.
Yeah.
The, they'll, they'll do whoever. Um, the only thing is that with water, they use a different side of. So it may be a different training and I know that water had already paid for, cause they had a more. And they had paid for it. So.
Yeah, so. I didn't even think about this broadband. Think somebody from broadband, you think. Can offer it? Peter would.
I don't know. I think that Peters, is your impression that Peters? I don't know that he.
Okay. That's fine. I didn't know if he ever asked for, if he does, we can always pull reports.
Right, I mean, so even if once I get back in contact with them, I just wanna make sure that this was okay with you guys. But we could always say, well, hey, there's somebody else, you know, this is their basic training and they do it for free anyway, so I will move forward with that.
So is it gonna be a Zoom meeting?
Excuse me, yes, it would be virtual.
Yeah, then everybody can have their own computer.
Yeah.
Great.
Um. So at our last meeting, it had come up, there were some questions regarding a possible moratorium or solar. And best projects, I believe I sent the emails to all of you guys, uh, the response from Attorney Eichmann. Uh. Just some highlights from his response. He says, in my opinion, it will be difficult for a new solar moratorium to survive Attorney General review. But regardless, there are good reasons to adopt a moratorium, notwithstanding the chance of surviving legal review. So.
Go for it.
So he did uh, supply a draft. What he's saying is that. It appears the town adopted a moratorium for the same reason in twenty twenty and that moratorium resulted in adoption of comprehensive zoning bylaws. That allow for large scale solar projects by special permit in much of the town. The fact that the town continues to receive applications for large scale solar facilities in areas zoned for this purpose. And that the effect on the town's environmental resources is the same as it was in twenty twenty, undercuts the primary legal basis. For a new moratorium. In my opinion, you will need to provide a specific and concrete rationale for a new moratorium to provide. The greatest chances of success. But he doesn't think that the large amount of these projects is a good reason, um. If you begin working on amending the existing zoning bylaws concerning solar. You may be able to put such regulation in place before the Attorney General reviews the legality of a moratorium. Um.
So that means that. What does that mean? If we begin to work on amending the existing zoning bylaws?
What he's saying is if you have something in mind that you wanna update your zoning bylaws to, like if you've already started the process on that, continue that process while. You know, and they could have that before the A G even gets a chance to review the moratorium.
Yeah.
You could pass the, the zoning bylaws, but I, they haven't started reviewing or.
Do we have anything? Has don't, has um, zoning hasn't come up with any?
He says that he recommends that the town study and address more specifically in the moratorium, the potential planning and environmental issues arising. From solar facilities in the town since twenty twenty. So what he's saying is if you have concrete examples of things that have happened in the town. Since twenty twenty in relation to solar facilities, those are what you're gonna wanna use in order to bolster your moratorium.
Yeah, okay.
But.
Okay, I think we can work with Dick with that. Yeah, how long did it take to get the moratorium last year? Do you remember? It's a, I wanna say it was at least six months. I mean, we had to. It's a process. Right, it's a process, but.
Is, uh, storage batteries part of that?
This is specifically in relation to solar, yes. Yes, but to that end, I also sent you guys an email. I'm not sure if you all got a chance to read it. Just a side note, there of the two interested. Vendors in best, um, the smaller of the two, Blanford Storage LLC has rescinded their notice of intent. Uh, for their smaller facility on North Blanford Road. So right now, they have pulled back.
Is that, that's not the one that we've been working with?
No, so that, that, the one that's coming tomorrow night, that's Mission Clean Energy, that's the larger of the two. Proposed best, so the smaller one has backed out. I believe it has to do with um, wetlands.
Oh, cool, okay. Can we, let's talk about the moratorium thing again.
Okay.
Second, so. If they don't, if we do a moratorium, that will. That opens the door for them. If the, if the A G approves the moratorium, does that open the doors still for them to go directly to the state? And bypass us because we're in moratorium? That's a good question. I don't think so. I don't think anything can be done while we're in moratorium. I think it's just a pause on everything, okay.
So they can override this?
Not if there's. A, a, a moratorium is temporary anyway, so. There would just be a running clock.
Just be a delay.
Yeah.
Right. Okay. So what do we wanna do? I definitely, I think that.
I think that you need to discuss it with the committees that would be responsible for the zoning, reviewing the zoning bylaws and. And making any potential.
So maybe we need to have, what's next week? Sorry, what's the date for next week?
Oh, the twenty second, yeah, that's.
We, oh, it's a special time. Um, I think that we need to do a joint meeting with. Um, loanes planning and conservation. And just get their opinion on moving forward with the moratorium. And I think that this section is specifically here about um, the rationale being environmental issues. I think that Dick would be pretty helpful in explaining to us if he thinks we have enough to go with that.
What concerns me about that is just that he, they're, they're specifically saying issues that arose with solar facilities in town since twenty twenty.
I mean, I know we've had some major issues with solar going in and we had, and I'm sure that Colleen can speak more to it. But I know that we had the issue with North Blanford where um, we ended up getting the.
E E P, the same thing on the one on twenty three.
So we have had some major environmental issues, um, where they've been involved and then they ended up having to like pay us back with Colbert. They paid us with Colbert.
That was the one.
Was it something they could correct or no? Obviously, it must have been.
It was egregious. It was, yeah, the, the what, the runoff, they had, it, it had to do with. That's why there was a lot of questions about this new solar related to the retention, detention ponds. And they just had runoff that just ran straight out the property, down the side of the road, washed outside of the road, ran under, went into protected wetlands. Went across the street into a huge beaver dam. Dick has a video of. This, three times the size of this building of just muddy water from there.
So I think that we may.
But I think that that happened before twenty twenty and I think the way that that letter was written was very telling. Because that happened in twenty nineteen.
Did it really?
But I, I do, I do think the point that they said is that we really, you know. When we, when Conservation came and requested a meeting with you guys and presented some really well-written battery storage. Bylaws and Dick had passed those and emailed them to everyone and really suggested that we start. Beefing up what we have. This was back in April. Um, and Jackie, you weren't there then, but I'm happy to go through the emails and send them over to you. We really need to work on our. Our zoning bylaws because, and I know TJ, you don't wanna hear it, but, but they, they were written, the, the. Our battery storage was basically written like an invitation. It truly was. And, and um, it, then it gets, because it's public notice, it gets put out everywhere and all the. So, so we really need to be doing that in conjunction and. There are copies, we don't have to, you know, recreate the legal. Look at.
Go back to what, um, the challenge, right, is that based on what you just said, maybe we have a step, like you said, have a separate meeting. Discuss, how can we go into moratorium? Obviously, something happened. But I, I wasn't aware of that. That there were challenges. We still approved it to, in other words, those challenges happened after they got set up, is that correct?
And it was taken out of our plans as a town, so when the state becomes involved, the same thing happened, uh, with something. Um, um, twenty three, once the DEP and the state is involved, then we're not allowed to miss site. We can't do site surveys, we can't do anything.
So what, what's the secondary solution though, I mean, is there another solution to this besides moratorium, is it really? There's not enough manpower to keep up with what's happening, is that why we're asking for this?
I wouldn't use that, because they're gonna say, well, that's why the state's stepping in and taking over permitting.
Saying, yeah, versus, what I'm saying was, versus going to moratorium, is there another solution?
Unless you have a purpose for this moratorium, unless you have a specific outcome, that's gonna be a regulation that's made or.
I think I'm confusing it, okay, maybe I'm not being clear, to me, the other solution is don't go into moratorium, get more manpower. Is that not correct?
If the reason, if, yeah, I mean, if you, if your reasoning is that you don't have enough people on your boards and committees and in working in office to handle it. Then if that's the reason, then yes.
I'm assuming that's the reason, why Dick asked for moratorium. What was the reason?
That was one of the contributing factors.
What's the other one?
Because it's an inundation like we haven't seen before. And we don't have qualified personnel to handle. All of these, and each one requires a peer review, it's for, very difficult for us to even get peer reviewers now. Because we had someone lined up to do a peer review of thirty Huntington Road, they're already involved in another solar company that wants to do another project on Huntington Road and they're coming. There's, i- it's not just the people in Blanford, we can't get the resources that we need outside of this project. And it's a complete inundation that is untenable. For the environment and for the town.
We can't solve it here, so, you know, that, that was good, cause that's what I was looking for, I didn't know whether or not it was Blanford or whether or not it's. You're saying, really, it's resources inside and outside of.
Because of the magnitude.
So that's the argument, we have to sort of, what, build strong enough.
Well, I really think we need to be changing the bylaws so that even when the town is stripped. You know, with these new regulations that are gonna be streamlined through, that we can then say, because to your point, you know, we wanna negotiate. Everybody, we think these big projects are gonna be happening, but we get to negotiate, guess what? We don't get to negotiate, they only have to come before us, so we need to be bu- building things in that says. If a project is approved, these are the things or.
Well, this may be the types of things that we, this will be the types of things we'll talk about. We, we're not gonna solve it here. So, we've got it.
The other board, this is what needs to be moved.
Okay, so does that seem reasonable then to do a joint meeting and talk about what our next steps are? In the meantime, I see that you already sent this to, um, this email to Dick, maybe send it to Planning and Zoning so they can take a look at it too. Before the meeting.
Can you send that to the Board of Health as well?
Sure.
We've got an email back from Markey's office, have we heard anything from our representative? Our state representative. Mark Paul or Paul Mark, what his name is.
Yeah, we sent an invitation for September twenty second to Paul Mark and Nicholas Mulbeg. I just sent it out.
Probably won't.
Well, we might.
Okay, so. Okay, um.
So that's the one, a set of data that.
Uh, oh, the joint meeting, we didn't send a date.
So October sixth, uh. The new Gateway Superintendent Melissa Mata Razzo will be joining us so that she can introduce herself, you already matter, but. Uh, and just sit, go over some things, so she's invited to the October sixth meeting, but that we could always, you know, do her intro in first. And then we could plan for the joint on October sixth if that.
Our meetings are the same.
At the same time?
We could, if you wanna do your meeting earlier or later, but our meetings are six P M one day, they happen.
We'll wrap around and come up with dates.
Yeah, I just want to wait, cause we can't cancel it.
We could always do it at five thirty, start early, and then with the joint, and then at six o'clock have the, um, superintendent come.
Also, we have again gotten, the board needs to make a decision on how they wanna handle this invoice from Berkshire Springs.
Yeah, I thought we already.
Water said they were paying for this.
Water has, is supposed to pay for this, they were supposed to pay for this a year ago.
When a year ago?
Um, yeah, this is coming out of Water. This was just, we had a meeting about. We had a meeting about, uh, emergency response.
They're not paying, and these people keep sending it to me. Where are the things?
I don't know.
And I send it to Water, and then they don't pay.
Yeah, we can, I can follow up and tell them again that they have to pay it.
I don't remember the date of the meeting, but I know it was decided that they were paying for that.
Is there anything else, Christina? Oh, I just wanted to double check, what is the status of the Water Department's super interviews, do we know?
I have no idea. They've gone through their, their folks and they came up with two, uh, to interview, so we just gotta get them on the dock.
So who's, are we scheduling them, is that on us, have they given you the two names?
So whenever we wanna do it, we, yeah.
Would they, does, do you want Water present?
Yeah, I would say.
I would say yes.
So that would have to be scheduled as a joint meeting?
We could do it, we don't, you know, there's so much going on that, and we've got the department level meetings at the end of the month. Could we do another meeting, I mean, would you guys be okay to come over and, do you just the interview for the Water? Somebody think? Pick another date, you pick it.
I don't know all the.
Well, the problem with that is we don't know when the applicants have availability.
Right, but if she gives a couple of dates where she can, then we can go to the applicant, say, I can come in.
Oh, I do not wanna do that on Friday night, that sounds. Thursday, the twenty fifth, I think I'm, I'm good, does that work for you?
Works for me.
Five o'clock, I think is the earliest I can get here. Does that work for you, Christina? Wanna shoot for that? Twenty fifth?
What is this movie? A joint meeting with the Water Department to interview the two potential candidates for Highway. Uh, for, sorry, excuse me, Water Super.
And you have seen the names?
I saw one name, did it?
I saw two.
Oh, you saw two, okay.
I thought only one person was named, I knew that they had two candidates, but I thought they only mentioned, I didn't know the other person's name.
So one to five, five o'clock?
That sounds.
That's if the candidates are.
That's another date, if you can't do this one, give them a. Try to get both of them on the same day.
Um, the following week. I don't know about cross-country meets up the following week yet, but we could shoot for the following third day. I think it's the October second.
Excuse me.
You can't do that one?
No, I'm gonna be at my granddaughter's wedding that weekend.
Oh, that's nice.
How about, can you do October second, or did he just start, uh, first?
No, we're leaving Wednesday to go off.
Okay, maybe that Tuesday, so the thirty?
Thirty would work.
Is that Halloween, no.
Wait, you're talking.
September, forget it. The Halloween, there's the picture of October here as I was. I got confused.
So give them the option of the twenty fifth or the thirtieth, preferably.
I'm just gonna do, I'm gonna say the twenty fifth, if anybody comes back and says they can't, I'll do the thirty.
It'll be just an hour, I can only do it hour.
Oh, yeah, can't do more than an hour.
Thirty minutes.
Uneven, all right, are you good?
There's a remaining bill from Radiology and Imaging that Matt had incurred during his accident, which was but over a year ago. It's thirty six dollars, may I please pay it?
Please go ahead.
Uh, I had a meeting on the tenth with David Johnson, he's the Chair of the Beckett Conservation Commission. Uh, we just kind of commiserated and discussed where we're both at as far as these influx of energy prod, uh, products. Rolling into both of our towns. Um, it was just an informal, like, sit down, we talked about the thing, both the things that we're facing and we're both in similar situations. Moving forward, we're gonna continue to, or keep in touch and, and I'm gonna reach out to Kathy Warden as well, she's the T A in Beckett. So maybe we can come up with something where we're working together.
Um, Otis, I think, is in a similar situation.
Um, I know that Chester has a new T A, so maybe I have a meeting with him as well. They do. Andrew.
That's exciting.
Male, female?
Male, his name's Andrew.
If you don't have the resumes for Water, I'll send it to you. I thought he sent it to you, but then she could flip them to you guys.
Here's the, uh. There's a meeting tomorrow that I'm attending. Is it tomorrow, yeah, I think it's tomorrow. Oh, there's a, there's a, yeah, there's a virtual, thank you, yes, sorry, there's a virtual meeting on Tuesdays. Yeah, that's tomorrow, September sixteenth, from one to two. Yeah, so I'll be attending that one too.
Who's that?
So, uh, it's the open house, the, the Senator Ed Markey, his office hours. He's doing a meeting, staff from Massachusetts and Washington D C offices will be available to discuss issues and projects related to clean energy, climate agricultural and parks. We are still tracking which federal programs have funding and reimbursements frozen, and our staff will be able to hear about any concerns about budget reconciliation cuts. Or if folks are having difficulty access better, accessing federal funding, so I'll, I'm gonna attend that just to see.
Are we having, do we know, we're having anybody getting pushed back in the department heads on federal funding?
I haven't heard anything.
I haven't heard anything.
I think this is specific to their energy projects though.
And that is really it, Elizabeth, yeah. All right, so, um, public comment.
Oh, I have something that, uh, constantly can draw my attention on the back door. Water's coming down the sidewalk, coming into that, and, uh, there, the sidewalk where the, uh. Drainage ditches, that's all overgrown and turf that has to be cleaned out so that the water doesn't go in. Down at the end here, and the wall is rotting through with the cinder blocks. And on the right side of the double door in the foyer, there is a, a cinder block wall. And that's deteriorating rather quickly.
The water just pours down. And so we've talked about this, yeah.
But nobody's ever put like French drains in or.
There are, there's that drain up there.
But on the sidewalk, that drainage ditch is covered over and the grass is filled in. And so water just goes right over the grass, doesn't even hit the drainage ditch.
We could ask our, the person who does the ground cleaning out there to clean it out.
I just wanna do more than that, they're gonna have to dig it out.
We're gonna have to get it, okay, so we're looking at.
Doesn't Ryan do that for Watson Park, why couldn't he do it there?
Yeah, that's what I was saying, he said it's gonna need to be dug out, I don't, he has the ability, I mean, we could ask them.
Didn't he do the one at Watson Park? It was a mess, Ryan Bangle came in, you, you.
He like cut down trees and stuff, but he didn't dig.
The town took out the slum.
No, he, he cleaned leach, is it called a leach field, I don't know.
No, leach field's different, that's, uh.
What did he do?
What did Ryan do?
He cleaned out the Colbert.
Yeah, so he did clean out the Colbert, the leach field's like under, that's, he's just talking about a drainage swale thing, but the leach field is like underground.
But we can ask Ryan if he's able to do that.
We can, Ryan actually sent me pictures over the weekend, he had to do like additional cleanup back there. Does anybody know whose trailer is back there, do you know?
What trailer?
This trailer?
Was it over by the pit, over the pile stuff?
It's been sitting there for weeks and a tree fell on it.
That's probably.
Nobody knows, there was a plate on the trailer.
I would guess emo.
Not that, Douggy's.
Can I see the trail?
Was it yours? He shouldn't know.
He let us borrow it when, uh, we were.
You leave it out there?
No.
Cause a tree fell.
We had it over here when we were, remember when that, the sheriff came in and cleaned up.
Oh, yes.
He let us borrow it for that.
You want me to text Douggy, cause I wanna go get his trailer. Um, yeah, let's see if Ryan can do it, if not, we can talk to Highway and, um, get their thoughts on it and then.
It's not a big job. More rock put in there so that.
I know, I know the difference between a leach field and a Colbert. We wanna go.
Yes, uh, public comment, sorry. Did anyone ask, yes.
I do know on the Finance Committee, reviewing the warrant online, it says, Finance Committee, do you agree? We've not been informed, are you working around us, cause there's only two of us? Are we still fully functional because there's only two of us, what's going on?
So when you see that under there, fi- here Finance Committee recommendations, that takes place at the meeting before special town meeting. So at five o'clock on September twenty second, the remaining members of the Finance Committee would come and we would hear your recommendations. With the attorney and the town moderator, and so all of that takes place at the brief meeting before the special town meeting. So five o'clock, I was gonna send you and Janet, uh, an email just letting you know that that's, but I just kind of understood it.
That's okay, but I heard that, um, the committee has been dissolved.
No, 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 no.
People to make a quorum.
No, no, so you don't.
That's why they're coming to the people we're supposed to know.
I appreciate that, um, no, you, you, it is true that you don't have enough for a quorum right now, but you can still give your recommendation on the items presented on the warrant. There is no problem with that, and that's what we intend to do, is have you guys there for that, there's, but what we really need is more Finance Committee. So.
People are not interested, I think I'll say it, I know, we don't get the respect from you guys that we feel we should get, that's why we blocked everybody. They're not listening to us as your finance committee.
Oh, I'm sorry if you feel that way.
I think that there was only one, there's only been one time I can remember that we disagreed.
Often we're not informed.
Oh, you're very informed.
Except the game here, yes.
It is, it is very important. I don't think I, I, that's the first time I've heard of that, I know there was a leak there. There, no, there was one time that we disagreed on, uh, something we were recommending for the police, that's the only time that we've ever disagreed with a Finance Committee decision. So I.
Well, not saying necessarily decision, but just.
I, I.
You can interrupt, please, speak up, you are recently off the Finance Committee. I don't think I wanna get into.
Deb, if I drop the ball in some way by not informing you guys, and that's on me. Yeah, if I drop the ball in some way by not informing you guys and that's on me, I was under the impression that the finance committee. Knew that before special town meetings, they come and they give the recommendation on the warrant as presented, but. I will take that responsibility. I did not specifically reach out to the remaining members, so that's on me.
But I think too though, and I will say something for a second, the challenge, the challenge is. The role of the finance committee has changed so much in that data we were in. Remember the meeting that we had where Mark was here? The last time we did a s- special town meeting, okay? I don't know if you were here. Dave Green or Kevin Better. And it was stated in that meeting, the only real thing that the finance committee has empowered to do is the reserve. Transfers. Right? That's what he said.
Who's nothing else.
Mark did. Mark's not right here.
So not the.
Right, and at that point I said. Okay. Because it really should be the finance committee should give recommendation on everything.
Absolutely.
But that's not the way it's written.
Well, it, it's, the finance committee is, does have much more responsibility than, beyond the reserve fund. I think. I don't remember Mark saying that. I believe you that he said that. My interpretation of that would be, maybe he meant. The only thing full stop that is just, you know, that nobody, we don't need the select board would be the reserve fund. Those are the transfers that. Happen. Um, but I think we can all agree that the finance committee has much more responsibility than just the reserve fund.
Oh, no, no.
No, I was saying, that was the way I interpreted it at that meeting. But the real issue, I mean, it, just to take this one step further too. Is that we don't have enough people voluntary for, we've got gaps all over. And we really need to address that somehow. I don't know what the answer is. You know, the only, what's that?
Hiring account for in the building.
As long as I've been here.
At some time, you know.
What's that? Well, there's so many folks that I've talked to in town that have been at something. You know, everybody you talk to, cuz I was on finance, I was in this, I, you know, everybody.
It's exhausting and it's.
But I do think there are some new people in town that really, you know, I mean. I'm thinking, this is me thinking out loud, is to have some kind of like, almost like a, what do they do when you're looking for?
A job fair.
A job fair type setup where people come in, we'll feed them and, you know, talk about, yeah. Talk about what. Um, only because maybe some people out there that are interested, they just don't know where we go. I don't know. But I don't think we can go live without having a third person.
Minimally, yes.
Right.
You're good, you're.
Try four.
Right, right. So.
Yeah, we have.
I don't know what the answer is either, guys, but you know, we can't.
What, for briefly, when new people moved to town, we would give them a basket. We had a welcome committee. I know that you're. This is sunny. We had a welcome committee that would give out baskets and in that was all information about joining boards and stuff.
So we don't even have anybody to join the boards, never mind join a.
I know, it was wonderful.
I know we can't solve it here, but any ideas would be greatly appreciated.
Colleen?
I know your mom is very helpful when she sells someone a new house. And that's how we got me, so the realtors.
The realtors are great, yes, absolutely.
That's how we got a third member.
Yeah.
Fourth member, excuse me.
That's true, that's a connection and so maybe. Sure.
Public comment real quick. First of all, thanks for getting this posted, the energy, what do you call it, energy citing, blah, 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 whatever. I just had two questions. Um, cuz I think Dick and I have had to fight over who. Biweekly, ten week, twice a week or twice a month?
Twice a month.
Okay. Number two.
Should've been my monthly, sorry.
That's okay. Um, super interested in hearing from, I was sad, who's left, cuz we want the fire. Department very involved in this, but the way this is written, it says fire chief or their designer.
Designee.
No, it says, yeah, so I thought it was like the person that's designing, cuz yeah, yeah, okay. But it's like, maybe they do have some.
I assume so, spell check, but obviously.
Uh, that's all right, that's okay. No, I'm, I'm not here trying to point out. I didn't know if you were getting the people that designed the building at the meeting. And twice a month, I swear to God.
That's okay.
Twice a week, so thank you.
Okay. Um, all right, so we have a motion to go into executive session, of course, we feel see. Thirty A, section twenty one eight two, discuss strategy sessions and preparation for negotiations and non-union personnel or conduct collective bargaining sessions. Or contract obligations and not. There's seconds.
Seconds.
Any discussion on favor?
Aye.
A roll call vote. Kara says yes.
DJ, yeah.